All right. We'll call the orders. Finance Committee meeting for that county Board of Commissioners Monday, February 1st, 2021. I understand we have one addition to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add, amend the agenda to add item 11A, offer for county property located at Street 33, Windfall Boulevard. I just received an email today from our agent, Alex Rich, that we did not have an offer. No problem.
Okay. Should I have a motion? Do we add this to the agenda?
Please move.
Second?
Second.
Move proper second, then we add 11A to the agenda. Any questions? All those in favor, that would be known by aye. All opposed, nay. I have it, and we have our agenda. The first thing on our agenda is tax releases and refunds.
Mr. Chairman, we will need to recuse Mr. Perry. He has two vacant solid waste releases, and we'll need to have recused him from that. So I make a motion.
Second.
Move proper second, then we approve, recuse Perry on tax releases and refunds. Questions? All those in favor, that would be known by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I have it, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion if we approve the tax releases and refunds as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, that would be known by aye. All opposed, nay. I have it, so ordered. Seven noon, we have ECPPS with us. They are coming to us with a presentation. I think it's going to be done by Ronald Jane Davis, the interim superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, we need to back up and do the budget amendments for Miss Small.
Okay. Okay?
Item number three.
Yeah, she is.
I know.
She's here. She's usually in the middle.
I was too close to the recorder, so I had to move.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to keep my social distance.
All right. Now, we have a budget amendment?
Yes, sir. The first one is just transfer funds from the overall COVID money to the grant line for 7950. The second one is to add control to use, reduce that COVID money by 12,200. Go to the quicks part down servers and the flight related flight component. Just to do the four times, I always do an increase because of the full time. There's a lot of companies that don't report that are in this war and some of them COVID several times. The last one is just a correction on her budget number. The 15 first department supply capital outlay to increase grant points by any grant to what you see.
Okay. Any questions on the budget amendment? I understand.
Approve that for second.
Huh?
Much to approve that for now.
Second?
Second.
We move proper second, then we approve the budget amendments. No more questions? All those in favor, that would be known by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That's the budget amendment. And now we're back to ECPPS. And we have Mrs. Davis in the plane. You'll come forward at this time, if you'd like, to clarify yourself.
School board chairman.
School board chairman, is it? I thought that would have worked on that math.
Okay. Please.
So, good afternoon to everyone. Chair, do orders. We did have a presentation, but I think it's, we all were also prepared by bringing handouts and both the slides that we would have shown, but we were fine to just do the slides we followed on. And we did have an audience with us. Well, Ms. Wilkins, who is our new director of maintenance is with us today, Marley Wilkins. We have Chair Portnoy sitting in the audience, and of course, you did all our finance officer, Chief Officer, Rick Payman's. And this is going to be a team effort. So in case there are some things that I may not have readily available, our team is just going to step up and help with that. Okay, so today we are coming to you because every five years, we have to turn in this facility needs to DPI. And we have completed it, and it's submitted electronically, but we have to get your signature from the chair and the chair of this commission board, and from the county clerk or the county man. That's after you have the chance to print, printing it, of course. Then once we get the signatures on that signature page, well, then we have to send it certified. And they know that we were meeting with you all today, even though the signature, we met with our board in January, early January. So just to give you a background and what I got. Well, every five years according to this general statutes, 115C 521. Local boards of education are required by general statute 115C 521 to submit their facility needs assessment. And these are the long range plans given to the state board of education. It's the duty of the school board to provide classroom facilities adequate to meet class size requirements. This plan is a long range plan that details what is needed to meet those requirements. The school planning, school operations division developed a uniform reporting system to assist the local board units in preparing a list of needs. The program contains a list of schools using the 2019, 2020, out at annual daily membership for each school, and that's called ADM. And these typical costs of building area standards from North Carolina Public Schools Facility Guidelines are built into the program. So most of the prices are projected by the program. The report is for school buildings only to meet class size requirements. It doesn't include any of the auxiliary buildings like maintenance or transportation or any of those buildings, only for schools. LEAs are asked to submit both a zero to five year plan and a six to 10 year plan. These are only plans, and it does not bind the school district nor the county to any other listed projects. So for major projects for the first five from zero to five years, if you follow along with those slides, you can see in handouts, the total submitted for years, zero through The breakdown in the schools is included in that second handout that you have. The major projects are those listed on this slide, and they include, for those of you who don't have a copy, it's the HLTRH H-Back, and that's in progress, the H-Back program, J.C. Sawyer, there's a Northeastern High School payment project. And even though included in your packet is, we don't have a Northeastern high school H-Back project, but it's currently in the design phase right now, and we plan to complete that as well. And let me tell you, we can go roof replacement. For the smaller projects for the zero to five years plan, we have, and those are the projects estimated to cost less than $100,000. And you can see that's the EMS, ECMS payment, and the high H-Back control. Then for the, excuse me, for the major projects, we have the north side payment, river road roof repair replacement, sheep harrying fire alarm and asbestos abatement, and the weeks full H-Back system. And the projects for the, these major projects for the six to 10 years are those that's totaling $3,716,036. And if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time, but you'll also have a chance to ask questions at the end. Now going to the smaller projects for six to 10 years, and these smaller projects include the asbestos abatement at Central, HLTRH, J.C. Sawyer, Northeastern High School, and Pasquotank Elementary School. And that's everything. So again, these, this is just a plan, and this is something we have to submit every, to our DPI every five years, but you know, we do have some flexibility to change those if we see that we need to do something different. And so if you're, if you can get your signature after you review it, we'll send this off to DPI. And again, it does not hook it to any of the projects, it's just that we share it with you, and you have a chance to review it.
Mr. Davis, what was that cost figure on the first one? I got the $3,716 for the six to 10. What was it on the zero to five for the major?
Zero to five for the major was $4,118,669.
Is that anything?
On the second handout, without the, the actual breakdown, those are your options or not.
So without our accreditation, we're going to go around and see what that request?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Stare? Mr. Stare, you have a question? Mr. Abbott?
No questions, just, I guess, coming into budget season, and you guys coming out of COVID pandemic, changing your operations. You know, I think I mentioned it to staff before in one of our other open sessions, and it may have been when Dr. Evans came just a few weeks ago, really. You know, just interested to kind of hear what you guys anticipate as, you know, your change in operations and the environment that you're working in, you know, with more remote classroom options and, you know, just different things. I'm just interested to hear what you're doing to kind of adapt to the changes that the pandemic made.
Right.
So not necessarily anything that I need you to answer today, but you know, coming into the budget season, and I'll be looking for, you know, little tweaks and differences, I guess.
Right. So, and yeah, we're coming into budget season, and of course, I don't want to get ahead of the board, but we know that education probably will never look like it looked prior to the pandemic.
Yep.
And just today, the team, and we are having, you know, conversations about different options for our students.
Good. Keep those conversations going. I mean, lessons learned from being able to, you know, transition so quickly up until now. I mean, we're coming up on a year, and it seems like we've already come so very far.
Yeah, just, you know, not just today, we've had the conversation prior to the day, but yes, we are still, it stays up.
Good.
Mr. Odom?
I don't think so. I'm going to take advantage of Ms. Wilkins being here in her new position. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you foresee anything like we used to have major breakdowns of a half million dollars, like the Northeastern project, stuff like that? But our fingers crossed.
We're praying, Barry.
That's right.
You know, I can't predict.
I know that.
I'm hoping not. We're trying to put out fires now.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Perry?
Are we still in, like, students are not at school as they're on their back?
Yes, sir. We started, students start phasing back in in October, November.
Still, they're actually.
Yes, sir. Well, we are, they phased back in and reduced capacity because we still have to have them socially distanced while they're in school. And so we can't have, like, the classroom, some of the classrooms may have, like, 10 to 12 student center. And so, you know, we do have some back in.
So you don't have many cases of the virus in schools with evidence, do you understand that? Probably.
Now, why are you going to go there?
We do have a dashboard on our website that we are trying to keep our, you know, family and public aware of the cases that we do have. I mean, school is just a small representation of the rest of the.
But not faculty and staff?
We do have the, you know, some faculty and staff out, you know, not necessarily all the time with the virus, but you know, they have been exposed, they have quarantined just like, you know.
There's anything that you don't have that you need from Pasquotank County that I'll put out?
We're going to be coming to you in a few weeks. And we'll share our needs at that time, if you get a chance to really, right now, and you know, I can't think of any needs right now. And there's the money lady, and she said not right now. But we will, you know, budget season, so just remember that now.
Thank you. Mr. Rudden?
Yes, if you could go to the bottom where it says totals. I'm trying to follow through, follow along with your spreadsheet. It seems like you have numbers on the left-hand side of the column, but we can get over into the, under the needs section of it. So that 5,500 all the way to the end under K through 12, that's under zero to five.
That's the total capacity.
That's your capacity. Are those numbers true numbers?
Yes, sir.
So if you go under the next set of columns, you'll see current capacity, ADM, and the differences. So our school capacity, that's what we can have in school and the actual ADM, which you receive monies from the state for. Is that what I'm reading there? Is that what that is, Rachel?
Yes, based on a calculation. Right, it's a formula. We didn't calculate that for each class or each grade.
So as you start going down in some out years or several years, it looks like our K through five is decreasing in student population. Is that correct?
It has, yes.
It has?
Yes.
It has gone down?
Now, we're not sure what's going to happen in the coming years. There's some talk about putting the guard to that boot, so we don't know what's happening coming here.
I was just looking at this trend here, but we're having some decreases in some of the student populations in the US current capacities.
Everybody's staying humble out there, Lord.
No, I understand that.
We've got five years.
That, yeah, that's why I was looking at the first set of numbers versus the other numbers. Like a thousand, yeah. Okay, thank you, it's a couple weeks. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Do you have any budget here? Will you include the projects, those that are in progress, up doing?
It's just the HLTRH project is included. And so we, you know, we have some projects that are current, and we didn't, like I said, the most, like I said, the most recent H-Back system, we have to begin that project, but it's not, it wasn't.
All right. Anything else? If you have anything supporting, I think we have our accreditation.
The next one. Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, the school district has a request to reallocate some of their existing funds towards the door access control project. What the district did is they were looking at initially phasing that project, so they, we've had 250,000 allocated to the project. They talked and determined it would be best to go ahead and do the project at one time. And so they've got funds remaining from a couple of different projects, and 34, 836 with the water upgrade, and then a water heater, 62, 660. They would like to request that the remaining funds of those completed projects, which totaled 97,496, be transferred to the door access control project. In addition, they're requesting to use 158, 355 of the H-Back, H-Back project, which they're not going to use this year. So it's a total request of 255, 851, and that would allow for them to complete the door access controls for all schools. And so we would recommend approval of that transfer.
One of the reasons we went right over to that, because since you were already here, and if they still have some other question on that, we could also, I don't know, right now. So the first thing we need to do, you heard the request from the school board, and you need to take some action.
Ms. Davis, just, that will give all your staff key access or card access to every exterior door, every building, correct?
Yes.
Early college.
Not the early.
Not, right, right, but all your employees.
Anyway, let's just go around again. Dr. Stare, do you have any questions?
I did just have a question, only because we have a similar system at T-COM, and we missed the opportunity to hear great our facial scanners with the card reader. And I don't know what your systems allow, but it kind of gave a positive, you knew that everybody that came into your building had a scan, right? You were able to match those records off, and so that's something that you guys want to look into. I would just make that recommendation. So not really a question, just a tip.
Just as, so the way it takes your card and has access.
Yes.
It actually has facial recognition, and it takes the picture similar to what you have in the office now, when someone comes in. So it may not be a great amount to add to a great point.
But yeah, it was, it was just something to make sure that, you know, at least everybody has.
Mr. Perry, do you have questions?
Yes, so in this transfer sport, there's no increases in any items, it's just a request, it's just passed through.
It's a reallocation of their existing capital funds, yes.
Sharon, is this going to satisfy that project?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Question to approach? Number two.
Second.
Moving proper second, then we accept the request, I think from the school board. Any questions? Any more questions? All those in favor, that would be known by aye. All opposed, nay. I have it, so ordered. Again, we thank you very much for coming. We know this has been a difficult season for you, but we thank you for all of your efforts, and we're here to help as much as we can. And I would usually say as long as you not have to put money, but anyway. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we move on to item number six, Water Sewer Master Plan Administrative Changes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what we have in item six through 10 are items that we actually discussed in our last Water Sewer Work Session, and these were staff recommendations from the Green Engineering Master Plan that either require no funding or that we have funding available to address during, in this budget. So item six is just the administrative change. It just changes, there's no costs associated with this. It changes the name Water Department to the Pasquotank County Utilities Department, and also it would change the, we've got two Water Department related titles, so it would change the Water Superintendent and Assistant Water Superintendent to Utilities Director and Assistant Utilities Director. So I would recommend approval to change the name of the Water Department and the associated position titles to the Pasquotank County Utility Department.
And I will entertain the motion without effect, and then we can ask the question.
Item six and seven.
With six and seven.
Just six.
Just six.
Just go with six.
We got six.
Oh, we approved, can we? Yeah, I need to. If it's okay, I'd like to inquire, is it, if everybody's okay to bundle the six through 10 together and approve all at once? I thought we had all come to a consensus.
Can we do six, seven, and eight together? Because the other talks about the water study fee. I think.
We're at a party, or we.
Absolutely, Mr. Perry.
We'll do six, seven, and eight together. Five, six, seven, eight together.
I'll make the formal motion of six, seven, and eight.
Okay. Move proper second, then we do six, seven, eight right now. Any questions? All those in favor, that would be known by aye. All opposed, nay. I think you've given a six, so you want to do seven and eight, huh?
We did six, seven, and eight, just yet.
We don't need any explanation, those seven and eight?
They went over six through 10, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, and they're just moving forward. That's why I thought I'd move, I'll be moving forward.
Okay. And now we're doing number nine.
Number nine, Mr. Chairman, is the water fee study, which is a very important recommendation to be paid when we move forward. You want to stay ahead of the curve in terms of the fees you're charging, and so we would recommend moving forward with $50,000 budget. It's a fund support available on the Water Department's budget, so we would recommend approval, the issue or proposal to retain the console, conduct the water fee study of our current water rate, as well as our commercial customer fees.
Dave?
I'll make a motion to approve number nine, as recommended by staff.
Second?
Second.
Move proper second, then we approve number nine, which involves a $50,000 for water fee study. Okay, we have motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Move proper second, then we accept the Green Model Study, $75,000. Any questions?
Just that we'll make that water study available to the water department. I would, I mean, if I was them, I'd love to have it.
It'd be inclusive.
Yeah, absolutely. Make it available to anybody.
Okay. All those in favor? All those in favor, please, that's known by aye. All opposed, nay. I have it. Number 11?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a request to purchase debt management software for the Finance Office. The software is Debt Book, and it would actually upload all the county's debt information into the software, which is cloud-based, and this would give us better ability to do reporting. And, you know, so this is something, of course, we start every budget process talking about debt, and that's, this is something that could be very beneficial to Sherry in terms of allocating debt and generating reports on debt. The initial cost is $7,250, and then it would be a $5,000 annual cost, so it's very reasonably priced in terms of software. And if we approve it, we would use contingency fund to move over to the Finance Office. Recommend approval to purchase the Debt Book software.
Do we have a motion? And we get the question? The motion? Motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the recommendation for the purchase of Debt Book software with $7,250, as recommended from staff.
Second?
Second.
Right? Any questions? 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 No questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Who has some questions for Sherry?
It will say.
Sherry's got a question.
Instead of doing the 15 spreadsheets that I do, it will be a lot easier recording.
Okay. Number 11A?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, 11A, which is the offer for county property located at 333 Windfall Boulevard. The property is listed at 159,000. I got an email late this morning from Alex Rich. He, just to back up a little, we had a church that offered 130,000. The board countered at 140, and they wanted to stay at 130. They wouldn't buy that number. The board then agreed to reduce it down to 130, and then the church is still, hasn't moved on that number. Now we've got one of the church members that's made a new offer, and that offer is $100,000. I would recommend countering at 130, 130,000 firm, which is the, kind of where we're at at the last time. So that would be my recommendation to counter with the new individual. So that would be my recommendation to counter with the new individual making, at least this time, we do have an official offer, not an inquiry, and so, um, I would recommend countering at 130,000.
So the recommendation is that we make a county offer of 130,000, questions? Motion to that effect?
I'll make motion to that effect.
Second?
Second.
Move on to second, any questions? Questions?
So we just never heard back from the church at all, just no contact.
Well, our, our real estate agent.
Presented the offer.
He presented, he presented the offer, they, you know, they're going to have to get some additional property for, for parking, um, they just haven't moved on it, so now what we have is one of the church members who's actually making a deal. So, so the church hasn't made any decision to move, they've even talked about potentially building a new church, uh, going out, buying property and building a church, so, you know, that's, that's.
Don't really know where they stand, really.
No, we.
Even if we countered, right, the process would be that he would start into an upset bid.
Yeah, well, yeah, if, 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 if they accepted 130, and, and that would be, I, I thought going down to 130 was, was best of all last time. I think, you know, one thing that we can consider in the future is, is lowering the asking price, the list price, which is 159,000, that may be something we, we want to look at, but I do, when I, if you look at comparable properties, 130,000 is always a good reason to, you know, if you're operating on a hat, on the church room, so. Yeah, there's just, yeah, there, Alex just.
I'm a big bag.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions? I think we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, let me know by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I have it. I believe that's the last item before we go into closed session, so now in motion, we go into closed session. Second?
Returning.
Returning is, okay. Closed session, but turning, fine. All those in favor, let me know by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.